But we're going to start. And I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024, Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals. First thing we need to do is call the rule.
Bruce Forster?
Here.
Craig Burrell?
Here.
Rex Meyer?
Present.
Luke Phelan?
Here.
And Mike Pratt should be here shortly.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to turn the meeting over at this point to our facilitator, Tim Zalinger.
I'll make a motion to turn the meeting over to the facilitator.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, all of you that are present. My name is Tim Zalinger. As the chairman has noted, I'm an attorney and a partner with law firm, Ward, Murray, Pace &amp; Johnson. I have the privilege of having been appointed the hearing facilitator for this petition. This evening, we're here on a pub for public hearing on the petition of Pulse Solar II LLC, petition number 24P1621, for a special use permit to develop a proposed five-megawatt commercial solar energy facility. My role this evening is to facilitate the hearing and assist the board with consideration of the evidence, the relevant legal standards. I am not an advocate for the, excuse me, the petitioner or an advocate for the county. It's my job to be neutral. I'm here to assist with the process, the organization, and flow of the proceedings. It is my job, however, to rule on any objections, were they to be made, on the immisibility or consideration of information or evidence. But the strict rules of judicial proceedings are not applicable. However, objections can be made, they will be heard and ruled on and addressed as necessary. We are a very technological society, so if you have mobile devices on you, please silence them, put them on airplane mode, chuck them out the window in this fine February weather, whatever you prefer. But please silence them so they don't disrupt our proceedings. I would note, for purposes of the record, that the elevator in the courthouse is broken. There is a secondary location that was set up downstairs for those that could not make it upstairs. It is interactive. It's on the screen here in the courtroom and also has audio available downstairs as well. The proceedings this evening are being taken down by a court reporter. She's sitting down here to my right. As you go through the evening, if you are one that are going to speak, I'd ask that you follow certain rules of decorum. Please talk clearly. If you are an interested party in the back, we have a few present this evening. There is a microphone in the middle at the podium you can use, but please speak clearly. Identify yourself the first time you speak. Avoid gestures, it's very difficult for the court reporter to take those down. While others are talking, please do your best to not interrupt or talk over them. If I ask you to pause for a moment while you're speaking, please do so so we can address a potential point that needs to be addressed that's arisen during the proceeding. Each party, the petitioner, as well as those that are here tonight that consider themselves interested parties, will be given an opportunity to speak. So please let the others speak without interruption, and I will ask that they do the same for you if you are one of those that will speak this evening. In making any comments or offering any insight that you wish to provide this evening, I would ask that you be polite, respectful to others that are speaking. And again, I will insist that they do the same for you. If you were to have a point of objection, please direct that to my attention. I will address that in appropriate fashion. Those are the rules that we'll try to follow this evening. The normal timeline for a public hearing is up to two and a half hours. If we're close, the chairman and the board can suspend that and we can go longer. We'll see where we're at in two and a half hours as necessary. But I'd like to start with, for the record, identifying the members of the zoning board for purposes of our court reporter. Mr. Chairman, starting with you.
Bruce Forster.
Craig Burrell.
Luke Phelan.
Rex Meyer.
All right, thank you. And county officials present?
Alice Hinkle, zoning administrator.
Petitioner, Ms. Kennedy, you want to introduce yourself as well as those with you?
Sure. Courtney Kennedy, on behalf of the petitioner, with me is Keith Morrell and Michael Keith.
Thank you very much. We have several persons present tonight. If you wish to speak as an interested party, please go to the mic now, introduce yourself so we can keep track of who wishes to speak later during the relevant portion of the public hearing. You're obviously welcome to simply observe, but if you're going to speak or offer a comment, I'd ask you to identify yourself for purposes of the record so we make sure we call on you when we get to that portion of the hearing. Well, everyone doesn't have to jump up at once.
Dennis Boynton.
Thank you very much.
Sarah Willey.
John Delgado.
Any?
I'm not sure yet if I have questions, but it's Wendy Willett.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Do we have anyone online? All right, there's no one noted online, and there is no one at the location downstairs that's observable. So we will now proceed. I wish to talk a little bit about the process that we're now going to follow. In any case or any petition before the board, the petitioner has the burden of proof to produce evidence and information for due consideration in this public hearing. Once we begin, the first individual will be the zoning officer, who will make introductory comments, statements, provide what we would call documents for the record. Once completed, at that point, the petitioner may ask questions of the zoning officer. The zoning board of appeals members may ask questions of the zoning officer. Any interested observer may ask questions of the zoning officer. Once that portion is completed, then the consideration of any witnesses or documents offered by the zoning officer will be considered. Same process, at that point, members of the zoning board can ask questions, the petitioner can ask questions, interested parties can ask questions. Upon completion of that portion, we then go to the petitioner's evidence. The petitioner can make an opening comment or opening statement if they desire. After that is concluded, they can call any witnesses they intend to present. Witnesses that are called will come forward. They will be sworn in. They sit in the chair to my right with a microphone, and they will be asked questions at that point. Once the petitioner is done with a witness, then the members of the board may ask questions of that witness. Once the members of the board have concluded any questions they have, any interested parties can come up and ask questions as well. When that is completed, then the petitioner may offer any final witnesses or evidence that they have, and then they will conclude at that point. If there's any witnesses that the zoning officer or the board wishes to call, they can. Once we conclude with that portion, then we will get to the portion for interested parties. Interested parties, when we get to that, have a right to make comments or a statement if they wish for the record. If they have a witness, they can call a witness. Otherwise, we'll hear their statements. At that point, the petitioner can ask questions of any interested party that's offering comments. The members of the zoning board may ask questions if they wish. Is there any concern over the process we're going to follow tonight? I'll start with the members of the zoning board.
No questions for me.
Hearing none, petitioner?
None, thank you.
Zoning officer?
None, thank you.
Any of the interested parties have any questions on the process this evening? Can everyone hear okay back there? Okay. So the record reflects that we've covered process. There are no questions or concerns on the process that we've followed. I now want to speak to the law or the ordinance in effect. The ordinance in effect at the time the petition was filed is the relevant county board ordinance amended in 2023. Under that ordinance, at the hearing where we're at this evening, it provides, and I'll read as follows. The ordinance provides that the county board may approve a commercial solar energy facility special use permit application if it finds that the evidence complies with state and federal law and regulations and with the standards of the zoning code, including the factors listed below, and we'll cover those. These factors are applied as a balancing test. They are not applied as individual factors where every one has to be met. Number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the commercial solar energy facility will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Number two, the commercial solar energy facility will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values of surrounding properties. Number three, the establishment of the commercial solar energy facility will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. Number four, adequate public utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided. Number five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Number six, the proposed commercial solar energy facility is not contrary to the objectives of the current comprehensive plan of the county. Number seven, the commercial solar energy facility in all other respects will conform to the applicable regulations of the county ordinance and the zoning district in which it's to be located, except as the regulations may, in each instance be modified, pursuant to the recommendations of and approved by the county board. Finally, the ordinance does provide that the county board may stipulate conditions, guarantees, and restrictions upon the establishment, location, construction, maintenance, and operation of the commercial solar energy facility as are deemed necessary for the protection of the public interest and to secure compliance with the standards and requirements of the county ordinance. Any questions on the relevant county ordinance members of the zoning board? All right, hearing none, petitioner?
No.
Zoning officer?
None.
Interested parties? All right, hearing no questions, we'll move on. At this point, if you're, when you come up to testify, if you are offering information or evidence formally, you will be sworn in, and as I noted, there's a place for the witness up here. At this point, we'll start with the zoning officer, if she would come forward. Mr. Chairman?
One thing, our last member came, so we need to put him into the record.
If you would state your full name for the record.
I'm Mike Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Is he going to swear me in?
You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony...
Would you state your full name, please?
Alice Hinkle.
And your position with the county?
Zoning administrator.
And for how long a time have you been the zoning administrator?
For approximately three months.
And prior to that time, did you hold a position with the county related to zoning?
Yes.
And what was that position?
The renewable energy coordinator.
And for how long did you hold that position?
Approximately three years.
And in that position, in those positions, the current one you hold and the prior one you held, are you familiar with the relevant county ordinance pertaining to solar commercial energy facilities?
Yes.
And in that position, are you familiar with the petition filed by Pulse Solar in this case?
Yes.
And is, would it be part of your usual and customary duties to process such special use petitions?
Yes.
Would you review those to determine whether they have provided all the documents contemplated by the county code?
Yes.
And did you do so in this case?
Yes.
And did the petitioner file all documents required by the county ordinance with the county?
Yes.
And did you prepare exhibits for consideration this evening?
I did.
And is that a zoning office exhibit list?
Yes.
And petitioner, you have a copy?
I do, thank you.
And members of the zoning board have a copy? Does any interested party wish to have a copy? Okay, we'll see that you get a copy. We will identify them so you'll know what they are before then. Hinkle, do you want to go through your list that's been proposed here?
Sure. Zoning office exhibit number one is a copy of the petition for special use permit filed on February 2nd, 2024. Zoning office group exhibit number two is a copy of the notification letters that were mailed to District 4 County Board members, Lee County Health Department, Lee County Highway Department, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District, City of Dixon, City of Dixon Planning Commission, Palmyra Township Supervisor, and Palmyra Township Road Commissioner. Zoning office group exhibit number three is a copy of the agendas for March 7, April 3rd, April 4th, and April 10th, 2024. Zoning office exhibit number four is a copy of the notice that was posted at the southwest corner of the parcel identified as PIN 1601354009. Zoning office group exhibit number five is a copy of the notice of public hearing, a copy of the certificate of publication for the Dixon Telegraph, and a copy of the certified mailing receipts. Zoning office exhibit number six is a copy of Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's Natural Resource Information Report dated March 6, 2024. And zoning office exhibit number seven is a copy of the letter of objection from Palmyra Township dated March 14, 2024, and a copy of the finding of fact by Palmyra Township, excuse me, Planning Commission dated March 11, 2024.
And you are offering consideration of these exhibits into this hearing?
Yes.
Any objections from the members of the zoning board? Have petitioner?
No.
Any interested party have an objection to consideration of those exhibits? Now, the record reflects, no, no objection. The exhibits will be admitted and made part of the record. Hinkle, as part of your job duties, did you provide notice to each entity that's entitled to receive notice of this petition?
No.
And did you receive copies of the notices that were provided?
Yes.
Those were provided by the petitioner?
Correct.
Did you review those to make sure that notice was sent to all those entitled to receive notice?
Yes.
And was notice sent to everyone entitled to receive notice?
Yes.
And the agendas were duly posted?
Yes.
Within the time period required by law?
Correct.
And other than zoning office exhibit seven, the letter of objection from Palmyra Township, were there any additional written comments received?
Yes, I do have a letter of objection from a interested party that was received by my office.
Probably make that zoning office exhibit eight.
Okay.
And we'll get that put in the record in the relevant time.
Okay.
All right. Petitioner, any questions of the zoning officer?
I have none, thank you.
Members of the zoning board have any questions of the zoning officer?
None.
Mr. Pratt?
Is at some point, will she read the letter of objection from Palmyra Township to the audience?
We'll see that copies are provided to all members of the zoning board, any party that requests it. You want, otherwise, she can read it if you want.
I would like to have her read it for record.
Have that available up here.
I have it at my desk. Do that now, or?
Why not?
Okay.
Let's start with identifying the date of the letter and who it's from, and then you can read it from there.
The letter is dated March 9, 2024, and it is from Brenda and Gerald Winger to the Lee County Zoning Board and Lee County Board. How many of you have worked or are working really hard so that you can retire and build or move to a place of your dreams? Perhaps it will be an open area with trees and an open farm field where you can watch the deer and the birds that frequent the area. This is our story of retirement. We both taught high school for 33 years and found a location where we could build a house and retire. Now our dreams are being smashed. We are now facing the dilemma that we will possibly have a solar farm of some 58 acres with over 20,000 solar panels that are raised six feet from the ground in our backyard. How disheartening for two retired senior citizens, and our main question is what can we do? How can we go up against the township, county, and state groups who are not interested in our well-being and are only interested in how much money can be made? We are concerned about the following effects it will have on us and the area around us. One, how it affects the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Two, how it affects the property value of our house and property that we own along the fence line on the west side of the proposed change. Three, how it will affect the wildlife that we enjoy in those fields. Four, how it will affect our health with the electromagnetic power that is being generated. Five, how it will affect our underground water supply that we have. Six, how it will affect our many electronic devices, computers, et cetera. There are many other concerns that are still not answered because no one knows all of the effects these solar farms will have in 10 to 20 years from now. Since this is a community project, it should be noted, in order for this to be successful, there must be a large number of subscribers. It is clear from the contact we have had in our neighborhood that none of our neighbors will be in that group. There are so many unanswered questions that it is our hope that you, the board, will delay such action until all concerns have been answered. You have the power and the influence to do right by this agricultural area and maintain it as it was intended. It is always interesting to note that many times decisions are made by people who are not affected by these decisions. How many of you live next to a solar farm or even have solar power? How many of you have taken the time to study all the ramifications that this will have on our neighborhood? It is very important to realize how much of an effect this has on all the people who must live with this day in and day out. There are many areas where it is more isolated and does not affect neighborhoods like ours. This area was appropriately, or, I'm sorry, this area was apparently selected because Commonwealth Edison happens to have a line on Kilgore Road, and there are no obstacles to be removed such as trees. This becomes a money saver for the solar company in Commonwealth Edison. It seems it is always about the money and the profit that can be made. We will never know how much money the owner of this land will receive by leasing this land at the expense of all of us that live around this area. In closing, we are pleading that you will keep this an agricultural area as it was meant to be and let us retire in the comfort that we have worked so hard for and deserve. Thank you for your time and consideration, Brenda Winger and Gerald Winger.
Thank you. Any other questions of the zoning officer by the zoning board?
I'm sorry, but that wasn't really the letter I was looking for. I was looking for the one you said, Palmyra Township.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Put it in a letter of objection.
They don't.
Okay.
Did I give anything about this?
Sure, sure.
One page.
So the letter, I think you're referring to is zoning office exhibit number seven, letter of objection from Palmyra Township. We'll have her read that one as well.
All right. This letter is dated March 14, 2024, and it is from Deb Dillow, the supervisor of Palmyra Township. Dear Alice, on March 11, 2024, the Palmyra Township Planning Commission convened for the purpose of reviewing petition number 24P1621, Pulse Solar II LLC, requesting special use, zoned agricultural, Ag 1, for the purpose of a five-megawatt commercial solar energy facility. Palmyra Township Planning Commission was provided the information regarding the proposed solar facility. Based on the review and the attached finding of facts completed, the Palmyra Township Planning Commission objects to the petition for the solar facility as a special use in ag zoning. As stated in the finding of fact, the proposed solar facility's location is in direct conflict with the comprehensive plan of agricultural and rural character. The township wants to preserve these qualities for the future and for the residents of the township. On March 12, 2024, the regular Palmyra Township Board met and reviewed the recommendation and finding of facts from the planning commission. Based on that review, the Palmyra Township Board accepts and agrees with the recommendation of objection to the petition. Although our comprehensive plan supports solar farms over wind turbines, the location of the proposed special use for the solar facility is a prime agricultural location with a lease score of 75. The comprehensive plan states the priority of land usage is based on criteria that will preserve farms, farmland, and particular resources such as scenic views. Therefore, please accept this letter of objection for petition number 24P1621 for special use from the Palmyra Township and the recommendation to the Lee County Board of Appeals for the petition for special use. If you need further information, please feel free to contact me.
Okay.
Great. Petitioner, any questions of the zoning officer?
No, thank you.
Any interested party have a question for the zoning officer?
I don't really have a question.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, it's easy for us, harder for us to hear you up here, if you wouldn't mind using the microphone. Appreciate that, thank you. Hearing none? You may step down.
Thank you.
At this point, I will turn it over to the petitioner and presentation of their witnesses or evidence. Ms. Kennedy?
I would like to make just a brief opening statement, if I may.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As I noted earlier, my name is Courtney Kennedy. I'm here as local counsel on behalf of Pulse Solar II LLC. As noted by our hearing facilitator, Pulse Solar filed a petition for a special use permit for a community solar project located in Palmyra Township, Lee County, Illinois. It is a five-megawatt facility proposed to be situated on 41.8 acres in total. With me tonight, as I introduce, is Keith Morrell on behalf of the project. Keith's testimony, I believe, will be comprehensive in nature in that he will give you an overview of the project itself, detail the applicant, and then will walk you through each one of the ordinance requirements for commercial solar energy facilities and how the project as proposed meets and conforms with those ordinance requirements. Additionally, Keith will speak to each one of the hearing factors listed out in the Lee County Solar Ordinance, and again, how the project positively addresses or impacts each one of those factors. Lastly, Keith will address Palmyra Township's objections to the project and how the project has attempted to address some of the concerns iterated by the township, such as the screening proposed, EMF, and land values. It is our hope at the conclusion of this hearing that you will, using the ordinance and the county's code as your guideposts, that you will recommend approval of this project to the Lee County Board. Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Keith Morrell.
Sir, please come forward.
You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give... Sign your name. Enter your name.
Okay, thank you.
You have a seat, and the first thing you can do is you can state your name and spell your last name for the purposes of the report.
Keith Morrell, K.E.I.T.H.M.O.R.E.L.
Ms. Kennedy, please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Morrell, will you state your educational background?
Bachelor's in Business from the University of Louisiana at Lafayette.
And what is your current occupation?
Project developer.
And with who or what entity?
With Ironwood Renewables.
And who is Ironwood Renewables? And who is Ironwood Renewables?
Ironwood Renewables is a community solar developer located in Lafayette, Louisiana, at 910 Harding Street.
How long have you served in that role?
For four years.
What are your job duties and responsibilities?
On a day-to-day basis, working with local municipalities like this to obtain permitting, doing regulatory compliance, doing site acquisition, to find suitable sites for solar development. Some of those are my daily responsibilities, connecting with landowners, doing outreach.
Are you familiar with the entity known as Paul Solar II LLC?
Yes, I'm familiar with it. It was started in November of 2023, and Paul Solar is an Illinois limited liability company and a wholly owned affiliate of Ironwood Projects.
Is it a safe assumption that you're familiar with solar energy facilities in general?
Yeah, in general, aware of the different types of solar facilities like community solar projects, utility scale projects, and the different technologies, as well as environmental impacts that it has.
How many megawatts of renewable energy development have you overseen personally?
Probably a little over 200 megawatts worth.
And can you tell us what the difference is between a community solar project versus, let's say, a utility scale project?
Yeah. Essentially, it's the scale of the project. So a community solar project is smaller in nature and connects on the distributed side of a substation, and all the energy would be, you know, here within local communities, kept within local communities. The utility scale side, it's pretty big and connects to larger transmission lines and are typically owned by large and independent power producers.
And is there an opportunity or a chance for those who are in close proximity to the project to receive any benefits from the project itself?
Yeah, once the facility is operational with the Illinois Power Agency's community solar program, subscribers will be able to subscribe to the facility and receive renewable energy credits, which in turn will be a reduction on their utility bills.
What is your role with Paul Solar II?
My role is the main lead project developer.
And can you give us a general description of the project itself?
Yes, the project itself is going to be a five-megawatt AC community solar project. So there will be solar panels along with a battery energy storage component.
Mr. Morrell, I'm going to hand up a document here. Are you familiar with this?
Yes, yeah, that's our special use application.
And it reads, I'm just going to read the title of it, Paul Solar II LLC, five-megawatt community solar facility, Lee County special use permit application. Does that sound familiar to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what is this exactly?
It's a comprehensive report essentially, including our site plans and other evidence to support the county's requirements for a commercial solar energy facility.
And did you prepare this document?
Yes, along with support from my team.
And did you prepare in anticipation of tonight's zoning hearing?
Yes.
And does it contain true and accurate copies of all documents pertaining to the Paul Solar II project?
Yes.
I'd like to admit this into evidence. Do you have a preference if I use numbers or letters for my exhibits? Okay.
This be petitioner's exhibit number one?
Yes, thank you.
And Ms. Kennedy, is this different than the zoning office exhibit, which was the original petition filed?
I believe the petition was just the one or two-page document. This would be like what I would refer to as like this.
All of the exhibits?
Correct. Yep.
Are you going to have him testify as to some of the documents?
I am.
Let's maybe address the admissibility of it once he testifies more to it, if you don't mind?
Sure, absolutely. May I proceed?
Please proceed.
Mr. Morrell, on behalf of the applicant, Paul Solar II LLC, do you commit to being bound by all representations and affirmations contained within this special use permit application?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask you the same question. Do you commit to being bound by all representations and affirmations made under oath during tonight's hearing?
Yes, I do.
Are you familiar with the ordinance regulating commercial solar energy facilities here in Lee County?
Yes, I'm familiar with the amended ordinance passed in July of 2023.
Do you know the potential equipment manufacturers that you intend to use for this project?
Yes, SMA Power for our inverters and Jinko is going to be our panel manufacturer.
What type of solar panels do you anticipate using?
Monocrystalline solar panels.
Well, unpack that a little bit for me. What does that mean?
Yeah, essentially, it's, so the monocrystalline component is within basically two sheets of glass that protect it.
What type of modules do you anticipate using?
The N-type, N-type module.
How many solar panels?
Approximately 20,000, a little over 20,000.
Will they utilize anti-reflective coating?
Yes, there's approximately like three-millimeter anti-reflective coating.
Do you know what direction they will be fixed?
So they're actually going to be on a tracking system, so they're going to be running north to south to be able to tilt east to west with the sun.
And will those be installed on posts?
Yes, the, yeah, the post will be screwed into the ground.
What is the maximum height of the panels at full tilt?
At full tilt, it'll be less than 20 feet, so typically anywhere between like 12 to 15 feet.
How many inverters are proposed with this project?
Two inverters located in the southeast corner of the project area.
Does this project contemplate the use of any substations?
No substations.
Will the project itself be monitored?
On-site, there will be maintenance crews and landscape crews that'll come out, you know, four to six times a year or as needed, but mainly it will be monitored remotely.
Is there a site plan prepared for this project?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And are those noted on exhibit D of the application materials?
Yes, exhibit D.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the project phasing timeline?
So the project phasing timeline, we're planning to start construction in, at the end of 2025, and it typically takes four to six months for construction to be completed. And then once completed, be the long-term maintenance operation that will take place.
Where is this project generally going to be located?
In Palmyra Township, Dixon, Lee County, Illinois, on the north side of Kilgore Road, about a half a mile west of Wolverine Road.
Sitting here today, who will own and operate the project?
Ironwood Projects.
Do you have site control for this project?
Yes, we have proof of site control.
And is that through some sort of a ground lease agreement?
Yes, yeah, we have a ground lease agreement.
And then... May I approach? I have an exhibit to pass out. Thank you.
I have just handed you a document I'm going to mark as petitioner's exhibit two for identification purposes. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I am.
And what is it?
It is the agreement for solar energy ground lease that we use to show proof of site control.
And who is the owner of the subject property?
Matthew and Bernadette Armies.
And is this agreement or the terms redacted, I would say, like the commercial terms redacted from this copy?
Yes, the commercial terms are redacted.
And is this a true and accurate copy of the agreement for solar energy ground lease for this subject property?
Yes, it is.
At this point in time, I'd like to admit this into evidence.
All right, do members of zoning board have any objections or concerns about admissibility of exhibit number two, the redacted ground lease agreement? No objections from the zoning board. Any objections from interested parties? Hearing no objections from the zoning board or interested parties, it'll be admitted.
Thank you. Jonathan, could we pull up the site plan set I sent you? I believe if we could direct it to C200. Thank you. Mr. Morrell, I pulled up on the screen a document labeled C200. It's part of your site plan set. Are you familiar with this?
Yes.
And I'm going to go through some of the ordinance requirements as it relates to the site plans, okay?
Okay.
Have you shown on the site plan set the planned location of the panels themselves?
Yes.
And how would we recognize those on what's pulled up on the screen there?
Yeah, so the panels are indicated with a kind of long rectangular shaped pieces going north to south.
I'm going to jump back word real quick, excuse me. In this agreement for ground lease, is the legal description of the property included in that document?
Yes, an exhibit is included on the last page.
Sure. And to be clear, that's in exhibit two, is that correct?
That's in exhibit two, yes.
Thank you. Okay, directing your attention back to the site plan on the screen here, are participating and non-participating residences shown?
We don't have any participating residences, so it'd be all non-participating that are shown.
But those names are reflected on the site plan set of the non-participating landowners?
Correct.
Are there any occupied community buildings depicted on your site plan?
No, there's none in the area.
And have you depicted parcel boundary lines on this site plan set?
Yes. They're depicted, the parcel boundary is depicted, I can show. So essentially, the super bold line.
It would be helpful, I'm sorry, Ms. Kennedy.
Go ahead.
For the benefit of the reporter, if you can generally describe what you were just pointing to.
Okay.
Because she can't put on the record where you pointed to.
Okay, gotcha. So generally, the property lines are the bolded outline surrounding the solar array.
And if you look at the ledger of that site plan set, that line that you're referring to is labeled boundary line, is that right?
Yes.
Does this site plan set identify adjoining properties?
Yes.
And are the setbacks shown on this site plan?
Yes, the setbacks are shown as well as annotated over there in the right-hand corner.
Are public access roads depicted?
Yes.
What about the turnout locations?
Yes, they are depicted.
What about the substation?
There is no substation. However, we did depict the battery energy storage component along with the point of interconnection along Kilgore Road.
Will this project utilize an operations and maintenance building?
No, we will have a temporary lay-down area for construction within the facility.
Have you depicted all electrical cabling to the substation?
Yes, it's depicted along the access road coming into Kilgore Road, the utility poles that will interconnect to Comets Facilities along Kilgore Road.
And again, you noted that there is no substation, so what will those be running to and from?
They will be running to and from the existing line along Kilgore Road, and it will cross Kilgore Road, and there will be five utility poles that will, there will be an underground component, but then it will come out above ground to the point of interconnection at Kilgore Road where the access into the site will be.
Sure. Have you shown any ancillary equipment on the site plan set?
Yes, the two inverters and the battery energy storage component.
For those sitting in the back, can you describe roughly or point it out where the battery energy storage system is located?
Yes, it's located in the southeastern corner. It's depicted, and I can point to it.
Again, I believe you've highlighted this, but have you shown third-party transmission lines?
So our project does not propose any transmission lines. It is going to connect to three-phase distribution infrastructure that's already existing, running east to west along Kilgore Road.
Do you show the location of any wetlands?
Yes, we do. And that is in the northwestern corner.
Are there any flood plains depicted on your site plan?
No flood plains.
What about drainage structures, including surface ditches and subsurface drainage lines?
None depicted.
Have you engaged with a local drainage contractor to address drainage?
Yes, we've worked, we're working with Huddleston McBride, and we will, as per our requirements with agricultural impact mitigation agreement, conduct the drain tile survey prior to the issuance of our building permit.
Does your site plan show any underground mines?
There's no underground mines. I think it's believed within like 35 miles of this area.
What about scenic and natural areas within 1,500 feet of the proposed project?
There's none within that limitation.
Okay. Did you provide a proposed decommissioning plan with your application materials?
Yes, we did.
And is that provided as exhibit E?
Correct.
And who prepared that?
Paul Solar and Atwell, Michael Keith with Atwell.
And who or what is Atwell?
Atwell is an engineering company. Their main office is located out of Nieberhill, Illinois.
Does that decommissioning plan, in your opinion, detail the overall process of the decommissioning of the project itself?
Yes, it does, as well as with the decommissioning cost estimate.
What studies, if any, have you had commissioned or provided that demonstrate this project's compliance with the ordinance regulating commercial solar energy facilities in Lee County?
We've, we've done multiple different studies. We've, you know, we just did a property evaluation report. We just got back a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office showing that we are exempt, being that there's no historical resources in the area. And then Michael Keith and his team at Atwell have done due diligence with regard to wetland delineations, as well as other site assessment work.
May I approach?
Please. Please.
Mr. Morel, I'm just going to label this document petitioner's exhibit three for identification purposes. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes.
What is it?
It is a letter from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in the State Historic Preservation Office, letting us know that there are not any archaeological resources within our project footprint.
What is the date of this letter?
March 13th, 2024.
And to whom is it directed to?
Keith Morel at Ironwood Renewables.
And is this a study that you just referenced in your, your testimony?
Yes.
And is this referred to as a SHIPO?
Correct, SHIPO, for short.
And is this a true and accurate copy of the letter that you received from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Illinois State Agency Historic Resources Preservation Act pertaining to the project?
Yes.
This time, I'd like to admit this into evidence as petitioner's exhibit three.
Any objections from the members of the zoning board? No objections from the zoning board. Remember your zoning officer?
No.
Interested parties have any objections? Record reflect no objections, and it will be admitted.
Thank you. Mr. Morel, has a noise study been commissioned for this project?
Yes, a noise study has been commissioned for this project by Krebs and Lansing. They're a civil engineer firm, and they do various work for projects like, like these. That report concluded that no noise, well, no noise by the Illinois Pollution Control Board standards would exceed their standards at, at the approximate locations listed within that report.
And did you provide a copy of this report with your application materials?
Yes. I think it's exhibit M.
And to confirm your testimony pursuant to that report, which is submitted as exhibit M in your application materials, the noise anticipated from this project complies with the standards set forth by the Illinois Pollution and Control Board?
Correct.
Did you have the opportunity to have a glint or glare study commissioned for this project?
Yes, we used a planning tool by Forge Solar to conduct our glint or glare study, and that study was conclusive that no glare would be emitted by our facility.
And is that, is that study report included as exhibit M with your application materials as well?
That's correct.
Have you executed an agricultural impact mitigation agreement with the Illinois Department of Agriculture regarding this project?
Yes, we did in February of 2024.
May I approach?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Morel, I just handed you a document that I've labeled as petitioner's exhibit four for identification purposes. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I am.
And what is it?
This is the Standard Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement that was filed between Paul Solar II LLC and the Illinois Department of Agriculture.
I'm going to direct your attention to page 12 of 12 of this agreement. I believe it's the second to last page. Looking at the signature for Paul Solar II LLC, do you recognize it?
Yes, I do.
And, and whose is it?
One of the managers of Paul Solar II LLC, Adrian Ortley.
And is this a true and accurate copy of the executed agricultural impact mitigation agreement for this project?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to enter this into evidence as petitioner's exhibit four.
Members of the zoning board have any objection to exhibit four, which is the AMA? No objections on the zoning board, zoning officer? Interested parties? No objections from interested parties, the exhibit will be admitted. I will say for the benefit of those in the back, interested parties, any of these exhibits that are admitted or attended as part of this hearing are available to you. They are public documents once they're offered, so if you wish copies or wish to see one at some point this evening, raise a hand. Don't throw anything at me, but raise a hand or something, so make sure we get that to you as well. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Morel, on behalf of the applicant, do you commit to adhering to and following all of the regulations set forth in this agricultural impact mitigation agreement?
Yes, we do.
Have you provided a topographic map with your application materials?
Yes, we did.
Is that found as exhibit F?
Correct.
Ms. Kennedy, if you could pause briefly. Sir? The noise study? I don't believe the noise study has formally been offered yet.
It is included in the application binder.
It hasn't been admitted yet.
Sure, yep.
Oh, do you have extra copies of that?
I don't, but it has been posted online so that anybody can access it. Correct, it is available on the county's website.
Right.
I believe it's labeled as exhibit M. Yes, that is also submitted as exhibit M.
Well, those aren't formally admitted as part of this hearing, they are available online. If they're formally admitted as part of this hearing, we'll see that you get to review a copy. Please proceed, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. Has a stormwater management plan been prepared for this project?
Yes. I believe it's labeled C 300, our site plan.
Jonathan, if I could have you scroll to C 300 on that site plan set? Mr. Morel, can you confirm that that is the management plan that you just testified to?
I don't think he scrolled to it, but I'm not seeing it. I think it was throwing me off because it still says C 200, but that's correct.
And to the best of your knowledge, has a natural resources information report been prepared by the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yes, Brenda Merriman from the Soil and Water Conservation District has provided us that report.
And did you have the occasion to initiate a consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources through its ecological compliance assessment tool, or otherwise known as the ECOCAT?
Yes, we did.
Do you recall when that took place?
Not exactly, but a couple of months ago.
Does February 8th of 2024 sound familiar?
Yes, it does.
And that ECOCAT tool identified that there was a protected resource that may be in the vicinity of the project location, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That protected resource was identified as the gravel shub?
Correct.
And what is that?
It's essentially a minnow.
A freshwater minnow?
Yes.
Are those present in streams, creeks, and other bodies of water?
Correct.
For instance, we're not going to find that on land, or we shouldn't.
Right. Yes, we're not. Go ahead, sorry.
Do you intend to build any portion of this project in any stream, creek, or other body of water?
No.
And was there a conclusion or finding noted in that ECOCAT?
Yes, being that we are not impacting any wetlands, the ECOCAT was terminated.
And did the ECOCAT specifically find that adverse effects of the project are unlikely?
Correct.
And did you provide a copy of that ECOCAT consultation and the conclusion with your project materials?
Yes.
And the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, or what I will refer to as the IDNR, they issued five recommendations for this project, is that correct?
Correct.
And the first recommendation is that you should establish a pollinator-friendly habitat as ground cover whenever feasible, is that correct?
Yes, and we plan to submit to IDNR to be considered as a pollinator-friendly solar site. By doing so, we've created a vegetative management plan, which illustrates how we're going to do that, and the native mix that will be planted to be a, be recognized as a pollinator-friendly solar site.
And in that, in that vegetative plan, in your opinion, does that establish that the project as proposed will conform to that recommendation from the IDNR?
Yes.
The second recommendation from the IDNR is that the site should be decompacted before planting. So how does this project as proposed comply or intend to comply with that recommendation?
Yes, within our vegetative management plan, we intend to fully comply with IDNR's recommendations.
And just for the record sake, to be clear, that vegetative management plan, that is provided as exhibit D to your application materials, is that correct?
Correct.
The third recommendation issued by the IDNR is that long-term management of the site should be planned for prior to development to ensure successful native pollinator habitat establishment and prevent the spread of invasive species throughout the lifetime of this project. An experienced ecological management consultant should be hired to assist with long-term management. Are you familiar with that recommendation?
Yes, and so we've, we're working with Natural Resource Services. They are the ones that formulated our vegetation management plan, and it typically takes about three years for the different pollinator mixes to seed and fully grow.
So in your opinion, that Natural Resources Services is a experienced ecological management consultant?
Yes.
The fourth recommendation from the IDNR is that required fencing, excluding areas near or adjacent to the public access areas, should have a six-inch gap along the bottom to prevent the restriction of wildlife movement. Woven wire or a suitable habitat wildlife-friendly fence should be used, barbed wire should be avoided. Are you familiar with, with that recommendation?
Yes, and we plan to use a woven, you know, fixed night, fixed knot type fence.
Will you commit to leaving a six-inch gap along the bottom of the fence so as to prevent the restriction of wildlife movement?
Yes.
And the fifth and final recommendation from the IDNR is that trees should be cleared between November 1st and March 31st. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, no trees will need, be needed to be cleared.
Okay, so just to clarify, there will be no tree clearing associated with this project?
None.
As part of that fifth and final recommendation, the IDNR specified that all night lighting should follow IDA, which is the International Dark Sky Association Guidelines. Will you utilize dark sky lighting for the project as a whole?
Our project doesn't propose any lighting unless needed so by the county.
Okay. And if the county sets a condition or a requirement that you utilize that, that you utilize lighting, do you commit to using certified dark sky lighting?
Yes.
And did you include the results of the ECOCAT consultation and the IDNR recommendations as exhibit G with your application materials?
Yes.
Did you have a wetland delineation conducted for this project?
Yes, we did.
And, and who prepared that or performed that?
Atwell.
That was the engineering firm that you previously testified about?
Correct.
Do you recall when that delineation took place?
I believe it was back in February as well, February 2024.
And what conclusion, if any?
No wetlands were found with, within our project site.
And are the contents of that wetland delineation included as exhibit H in your application materials?
Yes.
Did you have the occasion to initiate a consultation with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service through its Information for Planning and Consultation, or otherwise known as the IPAC?
Yes.
Do you recall when that took place roughly?
Probably around the same timeline, February 2024.
And what conclusions or findings, if any?
Yeah, so they came back with the possibility of the northern long-eared bat being within the area. However, being that there's no trees, our tree clearing that will be done, no negative effects would, would become of the northern long-eared bat.
And did you provide the conclusions and findings of that IPAC as exhibit I in your application materials?
Yes.
Mr. Morel, did you provide 12 physical copies of your special use permit application to the county?
Yes, we did.
And did, did you also provide one digital copy of your application as well?
We did, yes.
And you've heard some back and forth here, but that's actually been posted on the county's website, is that correct?
That is correct.
Or to the best of your knowledge, it has been posted? Do you intend to follow industry standards in the construction of this project?
Yes.
What about the general maintenance?
Yes.
And the operations phase?
Yes, we do.
And do you intend to follow industry standards in the decommissioning of the project as well?
Yes.
Will this project adhere to all applicable requirements of the American National Standards Institute?
Yes.
And on behalf of the applicant, do you commit to submitting certificates of design compliance that all equipment has an underwriter's laboratories rating?
Yes.
And did you provide proof of this as exhibit N with your application materials?
That is correct.
Do you commit to using all new equipment for this project?
Yes.
And so just, just to flush that out further, you will not use any used or experimental equipment whatsoever, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you agree that all electrical components of this project will adhere to the applicable local, state, and national codes and relevant national and international standards?
Yes.
And this would include the American National Standards Institute?
Yes.
And also the International Electrical Commission?
Yes.
Will all components of the solar panel be under 20 feet even at full tilt?
Correct.
Are you familiar with the screening requirements of the solar ordinance in Lee County?
Yes, I am.
And are there any platted subdivisions within one-quarter mile of the project site?
Yes, there is to the west of our site.
May I approach?
Yes.
Mr. Morel, I just handed you a stack of documents. I'm going to label them as, as petitioner's group exhibit number five for identification purposes. Are you familiar with these documents?
Yes, I'm familiar with this plan.
And what are these?
This is our landscape plan that Atwell had developed using a registered Illinois landscape architect, and it depicts on the western boundary. And if you continue on to the second and third page, in-depth vegetation buffer along the western western boundary of our project area.
So I previously asked you about the platted subdivision, and you testified that it was to the west of the project area, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And so the proposed vegetative screening, as I understand it, would be at the boundary of your leasehold area near the subdivision?
Correct.
I'm going to direct your attention to page two of this document, this exhibit five. In the lower right-hand corner, it should read sheet number C 401. Are you familiar with that page?
Yes.
Okay. Jonathan, if you could scroll down to C 401. Is it possible to zoom in a little bit?
Bottom right.
Bottom right.
Perfect. Mr. Morrell, what, if anything, can you tell me about what's depicted on this page, C401?
Yes, these are the different plants that we intend to plant along that western boundary.
And this would be as part of the vegetative screening?
Correct.
And is there a plant schedule listed on this exhibit?
Correct, down in the bottom right-hand corner.
And it looks like there's various trees and shrubs proposed?
Correct.
Now, the ordinance requires two staggered rows of screening, but you're actually proposing a little bit more than that, is that fair?
Yes, that's fair to say.
And why is that?
After our meeting with Palmyra Township, we decided to come up with this plan to help mitigate the site of the solar farm.
And you mentioned that Atwell also prepared this vegetative screening plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and did Atwell do so at your request?
Correct.
And is this a true and accurate representation of the vegetative screening proposed for the project?
Yes, it is.
Are there any non-participating residences located within one-quarter mile of the project area?
Yes, there is.
How many?
I think three. It's the Boytons, Phytis, and Willett are the names.
And are you familiar with the vegetative screening option that you're required to provide under the ordinance?
Yes, I am.
And do you agree to provide the visual screening option to those non-participating residences that are located within one-quarter mile of the project area?
Yes.
And just to clarify, that option will be sent in writing to all non-participating residences that are within one-quarter mile of the project area?
Correct.
And will that option also include a proposed design and budget estimate for the design, installation, maintenance, and removal of the visual screen?
Yes, it will.
And the one-time payment of that visual screen that will be offered to those non-participating adjacent residences, that will be comprised of the cost of the design, installation, maintenance, and removal of the visual screen, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And do you commit to providing proof that you offered the visual screening option to the Lee County zoning administrator at least 30 days prior to any application for a building permit?
Yes.
Will that visual screen be designed and prepared by an Illinois-registered landscape architect?
Yes, it will.
And will all vegetative screening be planted at a minimum of three feet tall?
Yes, it will be planted at a minimum of three feet tall.
And is that noted on this site plan set?
Yes, under the plant schedule on-site, the sizes are notated under size.
And will the vegetative screen reach a minimum height of eight feet tall within four years of planting?
Yes, it will.
And if, for whatever reason, that vegetative screen does not reach that height within that time period, what, if anything, do you commit to doing on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, we can definitely remove and replace if it's not grown up to that.
And do you commit to maintaining that vegetative screen in good condition throughout the life of the project?
Yes, we do.
Will you install that vegetative screen as early as possible during the construction phase of the project?
Yes, we will.
Will you utilize any security cameras around the boundary of the project?
No, we will not.
Will all power lines, including communication lines, be buried underground?
At the point of interconnection, yes.
Will there be a fence around the project boundary?
Yes, the entire project will be fenced.
And you previously testified that you will utilize a woven wire or fixed knot fence based on the IDNR recommendations, is that correct?
That's correct.
Will that fence have a minimum height of six feet?
Yes, we're proposing eight feet.
And will that fence comply with the applicable requirements of the National Electric Code?
Yes, it will.
Will all fencing contain visible warning signs concerning the voltage of the project?
Yes.
And will it have appropriate signs in accordance with the American National Standards Institute Z535 safety sign standards?
Yes, it will.
And will that fence contain appropriate signage according to the OSHA regulations?
Yes.
And will all of the aforementioned signage be placed at the base of all pad-mounted transformers?
Yes.
And will all of those signs that I just asked you about, excuse me, be placed at the entrances to the facility?
Yes, it will.
And how many entrances are you proposing?
Just one entrance.
Will the sign at the entrance of the facility contain the facility's 911 address and a 24-hour emergency contact number?
Yes, it will.
Will this project as proposed require the use of any guy wires?
Possibly.
And where will those be located?
They will be located at the point of interconnection, which is where the current existing distribution infrastructure along Kilgore Route connects where the ingress egress is for our access.
And is that subject to change based on finalized plans?
Correct, yeah, we have not gone through final engineering.
But if the use of guy wires is required, do you commit to utilizing visible reflective colored objects to be placed on all anchor points?
Yes.
And will you place those objects up to a height of 15 feet from the ground?
Yes, we will.
Are you familiar with the setback requirements of the solar ordinance here in Lee County?
Yes, I'm familiar with the setback requirements.
And do you agree to adhere to those setback requirements?
Yes, we agree to adhere and exceed those requirements.
And are the setbacks noted on the site plans submitted with your application materials?
Yes, they are.
So I'm going to go through each one of those setback requirements briefly. Will the project be set back 150 feet from the nearest point on the outside wall of the structure of an occupied community building and dwelling?
Yes.
Will it be set back 150 feet from the nearest point of the outside wall of a non-participating residence?
Yes.
And will it be set back 50 feet from the nearest point on the property line of a non-participating property that does not have a residence?
Yes.
Will it be set back 50 feet from the nearest edge of the public road right-of-way?
That is correct.
And so you just noted that you exceed those setback requirements, and what areas do you exceed those?
Regarding the non-participating residences, we're approximately around 200 feet there. And then all the 50-foot requirements were anywhere from the range of 70 to around 90 feet.
Will you enter into a road use agreement with the county?
Yes, we will.
And do you intend to do so not less than 30 days prior to the issuance of any building permit?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the requirements of the solar ordinance regarding the consulting fund that is to be posted?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and do you agree to post that consulting fund once a special use permit is issued?
Yes.
And you understand that the Lee County engineer determines that amount to be posted?
Correct, yeah, we've had a conversation with the county engineer, excuse me.
At the time you apply for a building permit from the county, do you agree to provide soil and geotechnical boring reports to the Lee County engineer?
Yes, we will.
And will you do so at your own expense?
Yes, at our own expense.
Do you agree to follow the guidelines for conservation practices impact mitigation submitted by the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yes.
Did you submit the manufacturer's sound power level characteristics for your noise study?
Yes, those specs are included at the end of that study.
Within 60 days after you complete construction for this project, will you deliver to the Lee County zoning administrator and the Lee County Supervisor of Assessments all as-built maps, site plans, or engineering plans for this project?
Yes.
And do you commit that all of those will be signed and stamped by a professional engineer and licensed surveyor?
Yes.
And have you provided an engineer's certificate with your application materials as Exhibit R?
We have.
And was that in fact completed by a structural engineer licensed in the state of Illinois?
Yes, it was.
And does it certify that the specific soil and subsurface conditions at this site can support the apparatus given the local soil, subsurface, and climate conditions?
Yes, I believe that the copies that they have, though, don't include that Exhibit R. I don't know if we can add that as an exhibit. In the updated version that Alice has, it is available online, but I don't know if we need to add it to the record here.
Will you utilize any outdoor storage for this project?
No, just the temporary lay-down for construction.
And I believe, as I understand your testimony, that will be located inside the site itself?
Correct.
Will you utilize only the vehicles, equipment, and materials that directly support the operation and maintenance of this project on-site?
Yes.
And will construction activities commence no earlier than 7:00 a.m. within a quarter-mile of a non-participating residence?
Yes.
And will those same construction activities end no later than 8:00 p.m. within a quarter-mile of a non-participating residence?
Correct.
Will you construct and operate the project in accordance with the construction plans contained in the special use permit that's approved by the county if it is indeed approved?
Yes, we will.
And are you familiar with the general annual operation and maintenance reports required under the solar ordinance?
Yes.
And do you agree to abide by and submit such reports and to provide all required information to the county?
Yes, we will provide that to the county.
Prior to tonight's hearing, have you had the opportunity to reach out to the local fire protection district?
Yes, I reached out to Dixon Rural Fire Protection District and spoke with the current chief, Mr. Dahlstrom.
And do you recall when that conversation took place?
It was early March of 2024.
And what result, if any, of that conversation?
Yeah, he has a copy of our site plan and mentioned that he'd reach out to Alice Inquell if he had any questions.
Will you submit a site plan, standard operating procedure, and standard operating guidelines to the local emergency responders, including the police, the fire protection district, and rescue agencies?
Yes, we have on-passed projects and intend to do so here.
And will you do so prior to the issuance of any building permit?
Yes, prior to the issuance of a building permit, we can do that.
Will you coordinate any walkthroughs of the site with the Dixon Rural Fire Department?
Yes.
And when will you do so?
Prior to the issuance of our building permit, we can conduct that.
Will you provide annual training for the Dixon Rural Fire Department at your sole expense?
Yes, at our sole expense.
Will you develop an emergency response plan with all local emergency responders according to the requirements of the ordinance?
Yes, we will.
And will you do so prior to the issuance of a building permit?
Correct.
And do you commit to providing proof of same to the Lee County zoning administrator?
Yes.
Will any hazardous materials be kept or stored on-site during construction?
No.
What about during the operations phase?
None.
Will you comply with all existing septic and well regulations of the Lee County Health Department?
Yes.
What about the state of Illinois?
Yes, we will.
And do you commit to maintaining a point of contact with two secondary points of contact with the Lee County zoning administrator?
Yes, we will.
And do you commit to doing the same with the Lee County Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
And on behalf of the applicant, will you, at your sole expense, repair in a prompt and timely manner all waterways, drainage dishes, excuse me, agricultural drainage systems, field tiles, and any other private and public infrastructure improvements damaged during the construction of this project?
Yes, as part of our agriculture impact mitigation agreement, we will do that.
And again, you previously testified that you intend to comply with all those regulations set forth by the IMO, is that correct?
That is correct.
What about any drain tile lines that are damaged during the maintenance and operational phases of the project? Will you repair those?
Yes, we'll repair and replace any damaged drainage tile.
And you previously testified that the project has contracted with Huddleston McBride, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are you familiar with the insurance requirements of the ordinance regulating commercial solar energy facilities?
Yes.
And do you commit to adhering to those requirements and providing proof of all insurance to the Lee County zoning administrator at the time you apply for a building permit?
Yes, we will.
Mr. Morrell, did you have the occasion to appear before the Palmyra Township Board with respect to this project?
Yes, we did in early March.
And the township, as I understand it, submitted a written objection filed with the county, is that correct?
That is correct.
Were you personally at that meeting that took place?
I was.
And since that meeting, have you changed or altered any project details to address the concerns noted by the township?
Yes, we've done property evaluation report. We've included an agrivoltaic component to our project as well as the landscape plan.
What is agrivoltaics?
It's a combination of agricultural and solar. So within our vegetation management plan, we plan on growing hay within our solar array. And Natural Resource Services, they have a local office out of Peoria, and they have equipment that is designed to bale up hay within like a solar array.
And that would presumably fit between the panels?
Yes. Yeah, it's a smaller bale of hay.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the land value issue that you looked into?
Yeah, so we got a report from Marus and Company, and within that report, there would be no negative impacts to property values.
And Marus and Company, how are you familiar with that company?
Yeah, so they're a third party that does land evaluations like this. They're located here in Illinois.
And is Mike Marus the owner and founder of that company?
Yes.
And did he, at your request, perform a land value study for this project?
That is correct.
And do you recall when he did so?
In March of 2024.
Mr. Morrell, I'm going to mark this as a petitioner's exhibit six for identification purposes. I've just handed you a copy of that, are you familiar with this?
Yes.
What is it?
It was a report specifically done for Paul Solar Two. It's a property valuation report done by Marus and Company.
And have you had the occasion to review this document prior to tonight's hearing?
Yes, I've had the opportunity to review it.
And have you reviewed any findings or conclusions contained in this report?
Yes, as a result of the research that they've done with local property evaluations, there would be no negative impact to property values.
And is this a true and accurate?
So you'll be given a time at the relevant point to ask questions of the witness. Once the report is admitted in evidence, assuming it's offered, then a copy, you have a couple extra copies.
I do, and we can post it online on the county's website as well.
So once that's admitted, you can look at the report. When it becomes time for the interested parties, if you have a specific question on the witness, you may ask it then. Please proceed, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. Mr. Morrell, is this a true and accurate copy of the land value report prepared by Marus and Company with respect to this project?
Yes, it is.
This time, I'd like to admit it into evidence.
Do the members of the zoning board have any objection to exhibit number six, the land value study by Marus?
Yep.
Marus and Company? Any objections on the zoning board? Zoning officer? None. Interested parties, knowing what you know now, any objections? Hearing none, it'll be admitted. Ms. Kennedy, if you have a couple of extra copies right now, if you could maybe share them? Thank you.
Mr. Morel, you testified to the vegetative screening, the land value report and then the agrivoltaics. Was there anything else that you adjusted or modified following that Palmyra Township Board meeting?
None, nothing else.
Are you familiar with the hearing factors section of the solar ordinance here in Lee County?
Yes, I'm generally familiar.
And what, if anything, can you tell me about this project's impact to the public health, safety morals, comfort or general welfare, in your opinion, with your experience in this industry?
Yes, it won't have a negative impact to those things that you just mentioned.
And you've previously testified that the noise study performed for this project concludes that the noise standards are well within state standards and guidelines, is that correct?
Correct.
And will there be any vibrations associated with the operations of this project?
During construction, there will be, but not during long-term operations.
Will this project generate any shadow flicker?
No, it will not.
Will it emanate any odor?
No odor.
What about electromagnetic frequency?
No electromagnetic frequency.
And on what do you base that opinion on?
Yeah, we've done some research and found a study, I don't know if we want to insert that into the record, that no electromagnetic frequency would be emitted, as well as the Federal Aviation Administration considers this, you know, a low risk. Solar facilities around the country are built next to airports, which require, you know, communication to various agencies and being that these facilities are located next to something like that, I don't think they would be operational today if they were to cause any electromagnetic interference.
In your experience in this industry, do you believe that there will be any communication interference associated with this project?
No, there will not.
Will this project require any new public infrastructure?
No public infrastructure, we plan on building our own ingress egress into the site.
And you'll build your own internal access roads at your sole cost and expense?
Correct.
Is there current drainage established on the property?
Yes.
And do you commit to maintaining that and improving it?
Yes.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the character of the land within the project area?
Generally, farm, farmland.
Is it being used predominantly for row crop production?
Yes, mainly corn and soybean.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the character of the adjacent properties?
Yes, so on the north, south and east side, it's mainly farmland and on the west side, there is residences.
Do you know roughly how far the project array would be from the subdivision or houses located on the west side of the project?
Over 200 feet.
In your experience and in your opinion, will the siting of this project prevent adjacent landowners from continuing to farm their land?
No.
And will it prevent other adjacent landowners from developing or improving their land?
No, it will not.
And why not?
Generally, community solar farms are a positive impact where they're located just due to the fact that once it is developed, we will be a quiet neighbor. Residential, commercial, industrial developments typically have a lot of traffic in and out. But once this facility is operational, you know, it'll just be there and be a quiet neighbor, so.
And do you consider this use that is a commercial solar energy facility to be a temporary use?
Yes.
And then how so or why?
This facility, the initial term of our lease is going to be for 20 years with options to extend it. So, once the facility does go into decommissioning, it would be returned to its previous state of being farmed around.
Do you believe this project will contribute positively to the local community or the economy itself?
Yes, with the increase in tax revenue, yes.
Do you believe the project will negatively impact the property values of other surrounding properties?
No.
And on what do you base that opinion on?
The opinion of Marus and Company's report.
Do you believe the project will have any negative impacts to the environment?
No, none.
And what do you base that opinion on?
Through the different agencies that we've submitted to, IPAC, Ecocat, State Historic Preservation Office.
Do you believe those internal, the internal access road depicted on your site plan, do you believe that that will be designed to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets?
Yes.
And tell me about the project's impact on local traffic conditions during the construction and operations phase of this project.
Yeah, so during the construction and operations phase, during that four to six months, there'll be some heavy trucks that go in, as well as construction crews. Typically, you know, anywhere from one to 15 personal vehicles and anywhere from like one to five trucks going in during that time.
And will those construction workers park on the site or in the site itself?
Yes, they'll park within the facility.
Tell me about the project's impact on traffic conditions during the operations phase.
Yeah, so during the operations phase, there won't be any traffic conditions to worry about. There will be, you know, local landscape crews, maintenance crews out there four to six times a year, but they will, you know, go within our site access and work from within there.
Mr. Facilitator, I think it just says a housekeeping matter, based on the test 20, I'd like to admit petitioner's exhibit five into evidence.
Exhibit five was the landscape plan. Any objections from the members of the zoning board? No. None, zoning officer? None. Interested parties, any objection to exhibit five? Exhibit five was the landscape plan. Hearing no objections, exhibit five will be admitted. That's correct. It's already been admitted, when it's time for interested parties, you may certainly ask the witness question. Exhibit five will be admitted.
Thank you.
We still have exhibit one hanging out there, too.
Sure, and I can move for entry at this time as well.
So, since exhibit one includes a lot of attachments, would you identify for the record what the attachments are? We've talked about, I think, many of them, but so that those present can hear what they are, if you would at least identify them.
Sure. So, I read the title of the document itself, but just for the record's sake, petitioner's exhibit one is Paul Solar II LLC, five megawatt community solar facility, Lee County special use permit application. And then if you flip to, I believe it's page three, there is an exhibit list. I'll just briefly go through that, if I may. Exhibit A is the Lee County petition. Exhibit B is a solar overview. Exhibit C, project phasing plan and construction timeline. Exhibit D, site plan. Exhibit E, decommissioning plan. Exhibit F, topographic map. Exhibit G, IDNR, Ecocat consultation. Exhibit H, FEMA firm map and United States Fish Wildlife Service mapper and wetland delineation. Exhibit I, United States Fish and Wildlife Service Threatened and Endangered Species. Exhibit J, interconnection request. Exhibit K, Lee County zoning map. Exhibit L, method of interconnection overview. Exhibit M, sound study and glare analysis. Exhibit N, equipment specification sheets. Exhibit O, Federal Aviation Administration screen. Exhibit P, agricultural impact mitigation agreement. Exhibit Q, Illinois State Historic Preservation Office letter. Exhibit R, proof of site control. Exhibit S, property valuation report. Exhibit R, engineer's certificate and exhibit U, visual rendering.
All right, any members of the zoning board have objection to petitioner's exhibit one includes those attachments? No objections from the zoning board, zoning officer? Any interested party have an objection to exhibit one which includes those attachments that were recited? Hearing none, exhibit one will be admitted.
Thank you. I have nothing further for the witness at this time.
I have a couple of questions and then I thought we would take maybe a quick five-minute break. Sir, with regard to the BESS system that's going to be on site, would you generally describe that and what safety measures are in place regarding that system?
Yeah, so the safety is one of our highest priorities and so during the construction portion, you know, we'll use the, you know, current standards for that, as well as during the long-term operations and maintenance, the facility will be monitored remotely 24/7. In the event that something does happen, we'll be immediately notified.
Is the BESS system a self-contained unit?
Yes, it's a self-contained unit. It looks like a shipping container, so it has its own fire suppression system within the BESS system, as well as like an HVAC system to keep it at optimal temperatures.
And when you met with the Dixon Rural Fire Protection District, did you discuss the presence of the BESS and any unique firefighting aspects that would have to be addressed?
Yes, we did discuss lithium ion batteries. As you may or may not know, best practices are to monitor it and let it burn out.
And when you say that, it's all contained within that you described as a shipping container?
Correct.
Just for any questions based on the questions I asked the witness?
Just a few follow-up, if I may. Do you commit that areas within 10 feet on each side of the battery energy storage system where the BESS will be cleared of combustible vegetation and other combustible growth?
Yes.
And will that BESS be cited to avoid any wetlands, floodplains or other environmental concerns?
Yes, it will.
And will the BESS or any related structure be located closer than 25 feet to the inside of the facility line fence?
Correct.
And do you agree to having a setback a minimum of 500 feet from any residence or occupied community building?
Yes.
And that setback distance is going to be measured from the nearest edge of any component of the BESS to the nearest point of the outside wall of the residence or occupied community building?
Yes, it will be.
And do you agree that any components of the BESS shall be set back a minimum of 200 feet from any nearest point of the property line of a non-participating property?
Yes.
Will all components of the BESS be set back a minimum of 50 feet from the nearest edge of the public road right of way?
Yes.
And will all components of the BESS, as proposed, be cited so as to be located within the interior of the project itself?
Correct.
Will the banks of any solar panels lie between the BESS and the edge of the facility?
Yes.
Will the BESS be enclosed by a fence with a locking gate to prevent any unauthorized access?
Yes, it will be.
Will there be an engineer's certificate relating to the BESS proposed by this project?
Yes.
Will that be completed by a structural engineer registered in the state of Illinois?
Yes, it will be.
And you mentioned that they'll be stored in shipping containers, but what will the shipping container be set on top of? Just the ground or will there be any gravel or concrete utilized?
It'll be set on top of concrete slab.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I thought we'd take a five-minute recess, so five-minute break and then we'll be right back to begin with any questions from the members of the zoning board, followed by questions from interested parties. Okay? We're going to get back started, so if everyone can please have a seat.
Which one?
We're missing our witness. There he is.
Wow, that's good. So is that on the Dowell? Is that sort of Dowell-based?
No, but we saw.
I'm tearing at seven o'clock. Just tomorrow night, tearing at seven o'clock.
No, tomorrow's at six.
Same switch.
We mentioned you in that.
But she planned.
It should be, right? Good, good man.
But it's next week.
Well, this, tomorrow night's not on the map.
Well, that's what.
Yeah, I did. That's the reason, yeah.
That's what we're guessing.
The paint on my fingers didn't tell you what I was doing when I got the phone. What'd you get? Have you got here since Easter?
Three quarters again yet. I haven't added up for the month yet.
We were in Rockford. We went to Rockford there yesterday afternoon and, man, it was wet up there.
My sister was. She was talking about how much shoulder it was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of rain yesterday.
We missed that.
Far north.
You've gone that far south, you don't.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Sir, I remind you, you're still under oath. All right, members of the zoning board, this is your chance to ask any questions of this witness if you have any.
I'll let somebody else start.
Fair enough.
I have a few. So, did the Lee County Soil and Water do a report on the soils?
Yes, they did, a natural resource inventory report.
I haven't been able to see that yet or whether I'm missing it or.
I think Alice has a copy.
Oh, it's in your stuff?
Right, yes.
Do you know what the, what they call the productivity index is on the soils in this project?
I'm not sure what it is exactly for this project.
So then, on map, C-200, if you can bring that up or you, are you, so you can talk about it?
You go ahead.
Can you tell me who the owners are on the, it would be on the western edge of the property, all along the west side and in the corner there and then onto the south side?
Yes, Mr. Delgado, the Wingers.
Say, who was the first one?
Delgado.
Where's that at? I don't see that on my map.
In the northwestern corner.
Okay, so there's no name on that. Where's that at? From the road north, is that what you're saying?
I think it might be on C-300.
Okay, I don't have it. I might have. So then there's, the next one is Winger, you said?
Yes, Winger. And then it goes down to Phytis and then Boynton.
Okay. So where's the fence going to be in relation to that property line?
Yeah, so the fence line is depicted in the top right-hand corner. It's essentially super close to the array itself.
So then the.
When we're talking about, when you're pointing pictures, are you describing the hash lines around the arrays?
That is correct. Thank you.
So the area in between, is that part of your property?
Yes, it is.
What will that be used for?
The remaining land will be used for mainly access and as well as like the landscape plan, but access for Mr. Hermes to get back to his other lands on the north side of the project.
Will it be controlled by your vegetative program or, so, you know, your, the plan that you submitted?
No, we won't, we won't be planting anything there except the long, the outside of the fence line with the landscape plan.
So then where is the vegetative screen that you're offering? Is it inside the fence or outside the fence?
It is outside the fence.
Okay. So you mentioned that you were going to grow hay and bale hay in between the panels. And then you also mentioned that you're going to do a pollinator planting. You're going to do both?
So I think the pollinator mix has what was needed to grow the hay. And that exact vegetative mix is in our vegetation management plan.
And that's been approved by whoever put that together?
Correct, yeah, sir.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Morel. The solar panels you've talked about, are they going to be the newer models that are double-sided then? Or what are you going to use?
They're, they're, they're single-sided, but they're trackers, so they, they will be able to track with the sun.
But some of the companies have come out with one that's absorbing from the bottom side reflecting up too.
Okay, we don't plan to use those.
Okay. And the battery storage you discussed, that's not, are these batteries hazardous material or not?
The lithium ion batteries, not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So the safety of these and you're working with the fire department, but they don't have a program yet to control the fire on lithium batteries yet?
Yeah, so the, the system itself will be in a battery, in a shipping container that has suppression system, fire suppression systems, as well as an HVAC system to maintain optimal temperatures for the battery.
Have you used this system in any of your previous projects?
Yes, we have.
How long have you used them or how long they've been in operation, the battery systems?
So none of our facilities are operational. They're about to become operational.
So you just have done this lately then?
Yeah, yes, we've done this lately. The, the state actually doesn't have a program yet for batteries, but we're thinking that they will expand, just being that they're trying to retire three gigawatts worth of coal plants. So there's going to be a huge need for, for power.
What's the power output if you use the batteries? Will that produce the same amount of power during the night that the solar system will do during the day?
No, it'll be less than that. It'll be, typically it's only a megawatt or two that it can hold.
Okay, okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. Oftentimes, these solar farms are placed on land that is less suitable for agricultural production. Is there something about this parcel that is less suitable for agriculture production, just out of curiosity?
No, not that I can recall, based on the NRR report. However, the, you know, the landowner wanted to diversify. He does have more farmland and he did, he wanted to, you know, do something like this to diversify what he's, what he's doing with his land.
His comment suggested that you will be connected in 2025?
Yes, based on the current timeline.
Could you tell me who wrote the lease agreement, the petitioner's number two evidence?
We did write the lease agreement.
Could you describe the current ComEd transmission line there?
So it is not a transmission line. It's a distribution line, what they call a three-phase line. It's 13.2 kilovolts that run east to west along Kilgore Road.
The battery storage area, the BES, there will be a fence around it inside the larger perimeter fence. Is that true?
That is correct.
What will that fence be made of? How will that be built?
We're proposing a woven fixed knot type fence.
Similar to the perimeter fence?
Correct.
You stated the construction would be between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. What days would the construction be on?
At this point, I'm not exactly sure.
Will there be any construction traffic parking on Kilgore Road?
No, we plan to park within our own ingress and egress.
Could you tell me where Pulse Solar Number One is?
There isn't a Number One. It was just due to the fact when we submitted our initial interconnection application with ComEd, we had to resubmit, so we just called it Pulse Solar Two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions?
No.
Petitioner, do you have any follow-up based on the zoning board's questions?
No.
All right. So now we are at the part of the proceeding where interested parties can ask questions. What I would do is ask anyone that wishes to offer comment. You don't have to ask a question. You can offer a comment. Please go to the mic, state your name again for the record and deliver your question or your remarks. So whoever wants to go first may do so.
Dr. Sarah Willey. I live at 1806 Hickory Lane, which is within a quarter mile of the proposed facility. I have some questions about the evaluation report first, but I also have a prepared set of points that I wanted to go through. How do you want me to handle that, Tim?
Whatever your order of preference would be, Dr. Willey.
Okay. I'm curious, looking at this report, it appears that they do a number of studies related to energy projects. Do they do any other kind of evaluation reports?
Can we get Mr. Michael Marus to testify?
You're the witness. If you don't know, then you would have to simply say somebody else would know. But you're the witness.
Got it. Yeah, so we do have Mike Marus online that's willing to answer those questions.
I'm very interested in the credentials of the company and what their background is and what other evaluations they do, or if they do it exclusively for the energy company. My other question for you was, have you worked with this company before?
Yes, we've done other reports. Mike Marus is a certified general appraiser in the state of Illinois. His clients have ranged from municipalities, counties, school districts. I don't think he's specific to just energy projects.
Do you work with them exclusively on your projects?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are really the questions. I would like to comment on this report. It appears that some of the evaluations that they give as to properties for comparison purposes are not accurate. So I just think that that needs to be taken into consideration. As far as my points, I wish to voice my extremely strong objection to the siting of this solar farm in our community and ask that the company rescind their request for approval or that the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals denies a recommendation to approve the necessary zoning changes. And I have a number of points that I wish to make that make me take that position. First of all, and this is not specific to this solar farm, I understand, and it's also something I realize the county board is operating within a recently changed law, but I personally object to solar farms being subsidized by citizens at all because that was never voted on as a referendum. In my mind, it, I'm not opposed to green energy efforts, however, solar farm efficiency, I believe, is generally around 30% and is not the best option for green energy efforts. Fully 30% of my current electric bill is dedicated to renewable energy subsidies. I believe strongly that that's nothing more of an indirect tax and a transfer of wealth to, from taxpayers to a single property owner. And this is an aside, but it's been bugging me the whole meeting. I wish you would quit mispronouncing Matt Hermes's last name because it's not Hermes. That is not correct. So I believe that this is a hidden tax and could well be a constitutional issue underneath. I also believe in and support private property rights. I don't want anybody telling me what to do with my private property. However, those rights are not absolute in my mind and have some boundaries. For example, freedom of speech is limited by considerations related to its effect on others. For example, you can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater. So when do private property rights infringe on the private property rights of others? And there is some other evidence, although this tries to discount it, that even within a quarter mile of the solar farm, there is a fairly recent study. It was done by the Berkeley National Laboratory, which is a federally funded entity, and they found that property values can be expected to diminish 2 to 3, 2.3% within a quarter mile. I'm within a quarter mile. Let's see. That, to me, again, may be a constitutional issue down the road. And I do have a question, not necessarily expecting an answer. And I do have a question, not necessarily expecting an answer, but whether or not there is a documented list of subscribers that must be recruited prior to a solar farm becoming operational. If there is, is that list ever made public so that we can see who benefits from solar farm energy generation? And I think it was Wingers made this point in their letter that at close to the solar farm, probably none of us are interested in subscribing. So who's benefiting from our inconvenience by this electricity being generated would be my question. I also am really concerned about the as-yet-unknown health effects of solar farms on surrounding residents. They're fairly new. We don't have long-term data to support that they're health-neutral, which is what I've heard argued. I personally am severely asthmatic. I'm allergic to most of the plants they're going to plant under the solar panels. And so I'm curious as to who's going to be responsible for hospitalization costs in a severe asthma attack. Is that the company? Is that the county? Who's going to make it up to me for my health effects? Other health potential concerns that I can see could easily result from significant hail damage while you're repairing solar panels. It seems to me there would be leaching of chemicals into the groundwater and into the water table. And if you've lived in Illinois very long, you know that hailstorms are a fairly common occurrence. So I'm concerned about that. How's the movement of any chemicals in the underground water table going to be monitored and mitigated? Because that could be a concern. The last one in this page is the roadbed underneath our Tyronship Road. Isn't very significant, the underlayment, because it is just a Tyronship Road. The contract presentation called for restoring it to its present condition. However, I would like to know how that condition's going to be documented and monitored for damage to the roadbed itself. This last couple of points goes more into the specific meeting. I would like to know why there was no agenda posted for tonight's or upcoming meetings prior to today. I checked, even checked the courthouse on Sunday to see if it had by some chance been posted as a public document on the door. It definitely was not posted on the web, and I think that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act because it needs to be 48 hours prior to the meeting. And that is a question I have about any action that may be taken. Is it going to be legal? Because the meeting wasn't posted as required. I also understand that the state law that went into effect last January makes it legally risky for the county board to deny a permit. However, with legislation having passed the House of Representatives in Illinois, it's House Bill 4135, and moving on to the Senate requiring a minimum 500-foot setback instead of the currently allowed 150 feet, I would ask that at a minimum, if you send a recommendation to change the zoning to allow it, that you require at least a 500-foot setback as part of that agreement. It would seem prudent to me that you at least also ask the company to consider a less populated area in which to site the farm. We just drove back from Minnesota a couple of weeks ago. They have lots of solar farms. None of them are within a stone's throw of a housing development. And it seems to me that there's a lot of property in Lee County that would not create this type of situation that could be used. In conclusion, what I would ask of you as planning commission is that you make a recommendation to the full county board that this not be approved and file an objection. I realize that the passage of this law was not widely publicized. Many people are very surprised to know that it took power away from the county board, but I believe that was the intent of the law, and I think it was designed to make it as difficult as possible for property owners to protect their own property rights because it does not allow for adequate time for research or in order to challenge the petitions or to circulate a petition objecting to it. It also, and it removes the county's power to manage the zoning within their boundaries and respond to their constituencies. I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willey. Next?
Dennis Pointon. I live directly across the road from the proposed site. I have more particular questions on the construction phase and anything, but I'm kind of frustrated right now after listening to this meeting because the documents we were sent and that I have from online do not match what we're being told tonight. So how can we get a final revised, is what I'm going to call it, copy of what's actually happening? The battery has been changed here. He talked about the fence along the subdivision changed from aboard. The first documents called for a wooden fence. If it was a subdivision, it's called for a wooden fence. How can we get revised copies that are the latest copies? Can somebody answer that?
I guess I would defer to the zoning officer. I believe the latest copies are probably online, but...
They are as of now. I just submitted this yesterday, so that is why it was a last-minute submittal.
Okay. So has what been presented tonight, is that the latest and greatest?
That is my understanding.
Okay, okay. Because especially this map, I would like a copy of that map with a few of the dimensions that I think are labeled on there, but I've got a TV-sized computer monitor, and I cannot see dimensions on it from this picture. This is one of the pictures I came up with, but this is not in the document that I was sent as an adjoining landowner. And as far as around that topic too, I'm not sure if you guys have been updated. The property owner on the north side is not myself anymore. It has been sold back in December, and that has not been updated on any of the drawings I've seen. It closed before the first year. So be sure and update those documents so you have the proper adjoining landowner up there. So at this point, you're intending to put the battery unit in the extreme southeast corner. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you said approximately 200 feet from the property line on that side?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Like I say, I'm just trying to get things straight because that is not where it was proposed. Who has approved your projected road site there? Anything that's going on our township roads typically has to have a permit to have a, if you've got a permit, to get a culvert put in there and to have a road, even driveways have to be approved.
We have not at this point, but prior to the issuance of building permit, we will enter into a road use agreement with the township.
Okay. Since some of this stuff has changed, I'm going to have to kind of muddle through some of the questions I had. So how much dirt work or excavation, grading, et cetera, is to be done on this property? It said some was, but it didn't indicate any extent.
Yeah, it's very limited as part of the AMA or Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement. We can't just come in and rip up the topsoil, so it'd be very minimal.
Do you have an idea on cubic yards or anything like that that needs to be moved?
I would like to defer this question to our engineer, if that's okay.
Okay. Something you brought up while we were talking here too tonight, outside of the fence area, you are saying that you have no plans to do anything with that. Is that just going to be bare land, bare dirt?
The landowner is going to use that for access to the remaining property to the north. Not sure exactly what his plans are, but I would assume either continue to farm that or just use it for access.
Okay. I think that should be determined because especially the subdivision owners along there, that could be a very dirty area there with wind blowing and stuff. We just had a terrible time this winter already. These east winds are just crucify everything. What about along Kilgore Road, between the vegetative fence and the road? What's going to happen there?
That will be, I guess, whatever is there now. So I'm sure it won't be planted...
Bare dirt?
Yeah. It wouldn't be planted with anything.
Shouldn't that be addressed? I guess I'm going to ask the county board or the zoning board to please address that, that they need to have their rented area at least fully seeded with something. My biggest concern on this whole thing is maybe not necessarily about the solar thing, but about the construction. It appears that we've been told that the vegetative fence will be planted at the same time construction starts on the farm itself. Is that probably correct?
Yes.
Okay. With the timeframe this will take and for those trees to grow, and even they're talking three years for this pollinator seeding to take hold and grow, that's going to be open bare dirt for two to three years. This stuff just does not come up and grow. We've had a lot of dirt move this winter already. They're talking about starting originally in the fall possibly. I know it's a long ways off, so they aren't sure, but I'm sure this will be open over a winter or two. There's going to be a lot of dirt and dust and debris blowing around. In the documents, it said they were going to try to use, I believe, water to cut down some of it, but they won't be there on weekends probably, or at other times, once it's up, before the seeding comes up. Where's all that stuff going to go? We've had a lot. There's pools, the one neighbor, the Wingers, that are not here. They have a pool right along that boundary line. We have one. It's behind our house. And we're from the, we're on the south side, so any north winds will carry it our way. I'm just very concerned about the dust and debris issue. That's what concerns me the most. Also talking about the proximity, like Dr. Willey talked about, this new bill coming, hopefully the zoning board will at least look at that. I'm not sure they can do too much with it, but if it's something coming through that's proposed, if this passes before that passes, I assume this would be grandfathered in. But our home is within 250 feet. The front wall of our house is within 250 feet of the closest array from what I've been able to determine from my older map that I had. And also, like has been mentioned, I think we don't know the long-term effects of this. So putting this in a highly populated area, I think, is really questionable. I know it kind of goes with, everybody doesn't want it in their backyard. I'm not really questioning that. I'm not pushing that. But I just think the long-term effects, we just don't know yet. So be careful on what you use for setbacks and how close this is, especially like to the subdivision. And we're the only other house that's close, I guess Lori is close to, on Phytis's land. But this is directly in connection with us. There was a noise test and stuff included in the packet that I looked through that evidently is an old packet. One was a noise test done at the original place the battery was located or where it's located now. Did you do new tests?
At the updated location.
You did update those to the new location?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You said something about decompact the soil? Did I catch that right? I'm not sure if I heard correctly.
Yeah, I think that's one of the requirements of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources.
How do you intend to do that?
I typically don't oversee construction, but I'd be more than happy to write that down and look into that for you.
I'd be interested in that too because that, again, is going to break the soil up and make it more friable and prone to the wind erosion. I really think that's not looked into well on this site. I know they haven't talked to the local road commissioner on this yet. I assume that will come later. But like I say, they need to be sure, as was mentioned, these roads too are kept up in as far as getting access where they want to. They have site distances and all that kind of stuff that the county engineer will help with probably too. I think that's all I have for right now. Like I said, some of the stuff changed because of some of the new things that came up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, before we continue, we are at the two-and-a-half-hour mark. Under your rules, the board can suspend the time limit for whatever additional time tonight if you want. This is also set again tomorrow for further hearing. I'll defer to you and the members of the zoning board how you wish to handle that.
I think we ought to at least go through the rest of the people on questions.
So we're clear on the record then, the members of the zoning board are proposing to suspend the rules on the time limits and continue?
Correct.
We can revisit this in about a half hour?
Yeah.
Fair enough. All right. Next interested party?
Good evening. My name's John Delgado, and I live in that corner property up there closest to the solar field. Now, I understand climate change is a serious threat to everybody around the world, and I understand the need for green energy, whether it be the wind or the solar power. But what I question is why does it have to be next to our little development there? I've got a daughter and two granddaughters, 16 and 12, that live with me in that property, and I have serious, serious concerns about their health and safety. Now, I heard you say that there's no hazardous materials in your project there, and I ask you, is there cadmium in your solar panels?
Not in a monocrystalline panel. No, there's no cadmium telluride.
Is there telluride?
No.
Is there lead?
No.
Is there anything toxic within any of the panels that you'll be using?
No, not that I'm aware of.
And the, in your battery farm or building, you've got the chemical for the teller?
We do have lithium ion.
Yeah. How hazardous is that?
I'm not sure.
And what's the life expectancy of your batteries that you're going to have in this small container thing?
Not exactly sure, but typically they finance the batteries for at least 40 years. So I'm assuming at least 20 years is the life expectancy.
Well, it's just that they're not forever. So somewhere along the line, you're going to have to replace, you're going to have to handle these things, or somebody will have to handle these things. And my concern is an accident. I mean, you can have the best-laid plans, but accidents do happen. And my concern is that because our little development with our water tables being so closely situated, anything that happens within your complex could go into the ground and leach into those water tables. Now, no matter how much insurance you have, my granddaughter's safety is, you can't pay me enough. So I'm very, very concerned about what can happen, even by accident, that would... that would affect my granddaughters. And then the other thing that I'd like to point out is you talked about the residents or the non-participating residents that were within a quarter of a mile? Well, there are other residents within a quarter of a mile. My neighbors, the Fosters, my neighbors, the Kents, and they too have young girls that are under 16. So within the quarter mile, there are six young ladies under 16. And at the beginning of our, of our development, again, still, probably within maybe a half a mile, less than a half a mile, we've got toddlers. So I am very concerned about our, our little development and the children that we have within our development. The other thing that Ms. Wendy made comment to is on some of the appraisals. If that document that we just looked at, there was only one house that was within our development, that was within that survey. And that house sold within the last year, probably twice the amount that's listed in your report. And when I look at national reports, Minnesota had diminished property values for homes that were within a half a mile of a solar farm by 4%. North Carolina had 5.8% decrease in property values. New Jersey, 5.6%. In Rhode Island and Massachusetts, homes that were within one mile of a solar project decreased on an average of 1.7%. So when we say that there's no negative or negligible impact on our homes, I don't think we really depicted a true picture. Then I have a question on the taxes that we're going to derive from your project. Are these going to be real estate taxes? Or are they going to be taxes on the power that you generate?
The formula is based on the power that is generated.
And who will pay the real estate taxes for the property that you're going to be, be sitting on?
We will be. The project entity will.
The project will?
Yes.
So the Lee County will see real estate property taxes and also taxes based on the amount of power that you generate?
It's all lumped into one statute on how the formula is created for the assessed value of a solar farm.
So it's, so the more income or profits that you generate, the more you'll get taxed?
It's based on a megawatt, so one megawatt would be taxed a certain way, two megawatts would be taxed, three megawatts. So being that ours is five, the assessed value would increase to around 450,000 year one. And so year one estimated property taxes is going to be around 40,000 based off of that formula.
But the only reason I ask these things is because I want to make sure that we're, that Lee County and the citizens within Lee County are going to get a benefit of your company being in this area.
Yes, yes, there will be direct benefit.
All righty, I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado.
Next? Come on down. You could be the next contestant on The Price is Right. Come on. Who's next?
I've just got one last question.
Well, if we could first go to people that haven't spoken, if you don't mind, sir.
That's fine.
So if there are additional people that wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Wendy Willett. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Morel and Mr. Keith. I did attend the Palmyra Township presentation they gave, and I did actually compliment Mr. Morel on the, on the actual project. He's put a lot of work into it, so has Mr. Keith. They are doing the best that I can see for a community solar farm as close to the residents as they can. With that being said, I still object to it because I am the property that does not have any delineation there. Keith is pointing to it. It's a corner there, it's right west of Phytus and south of Wingers. The house next to me is very close to me, so it can't be, it almost has to be in there too, and that's owned by Deborah and Charles Ferentz. So I think that the proximity is, is part of what's bothering me. Just one second. For those of you that are not aware of what this sounds like, this is what a solar farm home sounds like. And my concern is when I go outside, anytime that it's daylight, this is what I'm going to hear. I assume this is what's equivalent to 40 decibels, because everything I've been able to find out is 40 decibels, which is what is required by the OSHA standards that Mr. Morel had told us he had found at the Palmyra meeting would be what the approximation would be near my property. If I have to go outside and listen to this every time I go out during daylight hours, I think it will drive me insane. This is not a pleasant noise to always hear when you go outside. So that is my first comment on that. My second comment, so everybody heard it? Is it annoying enough? Should I turn it off? So my second comment, and this is for you, Courtney. I worked for ComEd for 25 years. It is a guy wire, not a guide wire, G-U-Y, guy. So you can correct your stuff going forward, because that was just eating at me, just like some other people were having with mispronunciations of Mr. Hermes's name. I do have another question regarding the property tax that was just brought up. I just want to further understand that calculation. So you said that that property tax was based on the megawatts and that Ironwood would be, or Pulse Solar would be the ones paying that property tax? Does that mean that the Hermes owners do no longer pay property tax on that field? That would only be, that would all be incorporated and that would be part of, quote unquote, the rent that you are paying them in the exhibit that we do not have and have not seen? Which we won't have the price anyway, I'm sure that's confidential.
Yeah, that's been redacted. However, taxes are in the proof of site control and how it's calculated. So the land that we don't use, the landowner will, will still be responsible for their.
So the two acres of that 50 acres, he will not be, he will be paying?
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. Pulse Solar 1, you said this was the original location, this is a rewrite basically. Where was Pulse Solar 1 initially being proposed to?
In the same location. So the reason for Pulse Solar 2 was just basically because of ComEd and their study process. So when we submitted our initial pre-application request, we named it Pulse Solar 1.
Okay.
When we did the re-request.
So it is the same location?
Yes, ma'am.
And with that being said, I know there are several locations in the, in the county surrounding Dixon. I went and looked, I found three on my own and have found out that two of those three are also listed as possibilities. And that was a question I had for Alice later on where can we find, or can we find where renewables have been suggested by ComEd throughout the county? Apparently that's public record.
Yeah, it's public record as well as they post their hosting capacity maps and update that on an annual basis to show where projects could be suitable based on current distribution data. And based on our research there and the amount of queued projects in Lee County as a whole, there probably isn't more than three sites in the entire county that would probably work in terms of interconnection and capacity and cost just due to transformer upgrades, substation upgrades.
I found three on my own, so, and one of which is across the street from our chairman of the planning commission. Two of them are located next to Mr. Hermes. So all three have three phase, all three are ready to go. It would be you're getting your engineers out there to see what they were. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that I found those on my own, just driving around. I did not drive the whole county, or the whole city of Dixon. I just went out to the mapping that's available online for GIS and took a look. So I just want to point that out, that there are other areas that are probably going to have the same complaints that are similar to our situation. So my question was, have you looked at others? And apparently not, so.
We've definitely looked at other areas in Lee County, for sure. However, we haven't moved forward with any of those sites.
Okay. In the last approximately 10 months, there have been two solar farms in the U.S. that have had, have sustained substantial hail damage and shut things down. If I understood you correctly, you don't have any at Ironwood that have gone live yet to have any kind of history on that?
We have some down in Texas, but none here in Illinois, ma'am.
Okay, so you do have some in Texas, okay. I have a question on, just to the, probably to the county board as to when will the vote on this be done? When is the board meeting that you're planning on doing the vote? Do you have that information yet?
I'm going to defer that question to Ms. Hinkle, although it may depend on when this matter concludes and when the schedule is.
If we're able to wrap up on the 10th of this month, then the meeting would be the third Thursday. And that will be April 18th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Alice. April 18th, 6:00 p.m. Okay. The distance from the city of Dixon, city limits, has that been looked at? Do we need a release from the city of Dixon because of falling within a mile and a half of city limits? Because it does not on all angles.
I guess the way I would answer your question as the facilitator is, under the state rules, the city's entitled to notice because it's within a mile and a half. Whether the city chooses to object or file an objection or file a non-objection is up to the city. There's not a requirement that the city consent to it, as you've suggested. It's a objection, non-objection.
Okay, but they would be notified to do that?
They were notified in this case, and they did not submit a letter of objection, as I understand it.
Correct. Okay. On the, on Phytus's farm, I guess whatever you'd call it, it's noted on the mapping that it's an exception area. What does that mean?
I would like to divert our engineer on this question.
He's got a funny look, too. It's, it's, it says that it's an exception area.
If you would continue to proceed, I think he will probably answer the question at some point, but.
So we know of two bald eagle nests that are within 2,700 feet of the proposed area. Are there any migratory bird type situations with solar farms? And the bald eagles in specific with their, their own special rulings?
Yeah, not to my knowledge. And, you know, we submitted that request to the United States Federal Wildlife and Fish Service, and they didn't flag anything for any bald eagles or other endangered species besides the northern long-eared bat.
Okay. Are they aware there's nests, I guess? And not that you're going to be able to answer that. Sorry, I'm kind of cleanup crew here. One of the questions we have is, are we able to submit documents of record to the county board members? Is one of the questions that I was asked to present as a neighborhood.
I believe you are free to submit letters or memos to any county board member. They are elected by the members of their districts to represent you, certainly entitled to receive that communication if you desire.
Okay, thank you. And then I just want to go back to Mr. Morel's, his exhibit six that you're wanting to put in. My biggest concern, aside from the fact that the valuations are incorrect and the, and we have no idea those on taxes without looking every one of them up, my concern is how do we look at this as a residential sale and say that this has absolutely no effect on property values when the application for sales wasn't, for this solar farm wasn't, wasn't in existence? And these date from October 21 to December of '23. So I don't know how, when there's not an application out there, how there are even any pertinence for an evaluation. And I defer that to your appraiser, because I don't feel that they hold any credence. So that's my list of short questions. I'm going to defer to some people over here. But if you can help us understand some of that, it would be appreciated.
Thank you, Wendy.
My name's Dr. Joyce Johnson. I am a resident of the cul-de-sac that will be adjacent to the solar farm. And as you've heard tonight, we all believe in solar energy. We are just very, very much against the proximity this is to all of our homes. This is new technology, and I know that you can sit there with confidence, a certain amount of confidence about no apparent toxins or poisons. We don't know the long-term effects of this. The average age of our children would be about 12 years old on our street. Many babies, some teenagers. There's other places where this solar farm can go. And we are united as a community, as a neighborhood. You've grossly devalued our homes. Our property taxes that we pay will show that. We, we have collectively signed documents and petitions and let all of us here tonight show you that we are united as a neighborhood because we collectively believe that this is not the best for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, doctor.
Further comments? Please proceed.
Hi, my name's Sean Foster. I'm a resident. Actually, I live right next to John Delgado, so the proximity of this solar farm is very close to me and my family. Excuse me, but I have a certain distrust, distrust for what's going on here. This right here should be thrown out right away. You're talking about like sale prices? None of these numbers are correct. None of these numbers are correct. So I can pull up Zillow with just the internet and Zillow. And for this home at 1805 White Pines Drive, it says a sale price on 101221 is $220,500. It's completely incorrect. That home actually sold on 101221, which is probably the only right fact there. And unless this is wrong and the agents are wrong, that home sold for $399. Then on 1814 Hickory Lane, and I just looked up two homes in about five minutes. We've had no time to go over any information, and this is just thrown on us. The home at 1814 Hickory Lane, they say it sold for $240 on 82823. That is also incorrect. That home actually sold for $425. They're way off on these. So I would say take this out of exhibit, because it's garbage. The other, the other issue I do have, and I'm wondering, so the House, the Illinois House Bill HB 4135 that is proposed, are you, if that does pass, are you guys going to change the setback laws there? Because if that does pass, you got to be 500 feet. And that just went into effect. And that just went into effect. It hasn't gone into effect, but it did pass, or introduced and passed, voted on. So if that does get voted on, does something change? Are you guys going to push it back or even?
I'm not exactly sure the answer to that question. Typically, we would be grandfathered in under the original ordinance of July 2023, as it is amended. However, I don't, I don't know.
So if it passes after, do you guys just say, uh, well, I guess it already passed and we're not doing anything about it?
If the county makes it a requirement, then.
I would eject as it calls for a legal conclusion. I think that's certainly a question that I'd be happy to answer, or the state's attorney could weigh in at a different time.
I think the gentleman can ask the question whether a company would voluntarily change any setbacks if the law changes. But you are correct, the witness is not going to give a legal interpretation. So maybe if you want to ask your question in a different way.
Yep.
Objection sustained.
And then in terms of, sorry, I wasn't prepared to talk tonight, so I thought I'd just sit back and listen. But you were saying that there's going to be no glare whatsoever? That, that was your words, there was no glare?
Yeah, based on the planning tool that we use with Forge Solar.
Okay. And then there's going to be no sound?
No sound. No, there, there will be sound, it won't.
There'll be sound, but no sound?
No. So there, there will be sound, but it won't pass the limitation set by the Illinois Pollution Control Board.
And how loud is this? Like, can we get an example of that?
Yeah, so.
Because like with me sitting out with my family on a summer night, I don't want to hear that hum. It's horrible.
Yeah, so.
And for as much money as we spent, and we spend on taxes, I think our voices should be heard. I mean, it's, it.
So, sir, if you're going to ask a question, that's fair, but please let the witness finish his answer before you continue, okay? Do you have an answer you can?
Yeah, so that hum that you heard, you would have to be within the array to hear that. Within the outer fence line, at most, I think in the report it says 25 decibels. So, and that's within that out, like the outer, outer boundary. But there's more specifics to the actual decibel ratings, and it gives a, a small area, and then it, it goes essentially bigger to show where, what decibel rating there is.
Okay. And the solar panels are going to sit about six foot high?
So, yeah, so no taller than 20 foot typically, it's anywhere between six upwards, you know, a 15, depending the angle, time of day.
And three foot vegetation is pretty cool for, so to kind of block that out.
Yeah, so three foot, our panel sits up at three foot, so yeah, the vegetation would be under that, yes, sir. Thank you.
Further questions? Further comments?
I'd like to make one additional comment, since we've had so many comments on the appraisal valuation, specifically because none of the houses that were looked at for valuation were in our little development. We have 21 homes in our development, and he only looked at one. Now, what I would suggest is we hire a company, an appraisal company, look at a community where there is an existing and operating solar farm, and then take appraisal of the homes around, within a quarter mile of the solar farm, and those outside of a quarter of a mile. Because from what I've read, houses that, that are located at least a half a mile or beyond will have negligible impact as far as property values. But you can't tell me, if I wanted to sell my house tomorrow, that I'm going to get what I think I should get if there's going to be a solar farm next to it. I don't think anybody would want to buy it. So that's my comment.
All right. Mr. Point, I think you had a follow-up question. I wanted to make sure I got back to you, and I apologize.
No, that's fine. It was just on the same subject they were talking about at the time, that's why I had it. When they were talking about the taxes on the unit, is there any sales tax from your sale of energy? I guess that's the first question. Do you have to pay sales tax on the energy you sell?
I'm not exactly sure. I, I don't think there's a sales tax directly, no. The, the.
There's all kinds of taxes on our, on our electric.
Yeah, there's just one lump tax that the, I forgot the exact statute number, but that, that's the way that they assess it.
Okay. But that's for the real estate taxes. I was wondering about a, an income tax type thing where it's on the sales tax, because if a car dealer sells a car in Dixon, part of that sales tax goes to the city. And the township has struggled with getting the sales tax that they are due from a car dealership in our township, so I wondered if, you know, when you sold energy, if some of that tax, if it's taxed, and then if it comes back to the township. Just the one other final question I've got, I think you kind of talked around it a little bit. Is there a direct way to extinguish a lithium ion battery fire?
No, it's essentially a controlled burn.
And you said that you just basically let it burn out, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I work with fire departments throughout the Midwest, and I know that either a controlled burn or foam will actually put it in. You just got to make sure it does not have PFOS. So if PFOS is a serious cancer agent, it will get in the soil. Most fire departments have had to decommission the use of the spray foam there, so.
Ma'am, you wanted to speak. Following this individual, we are at the two and a half, or excuse me, the three hour mark now. Tomorrow night does continue this public hearing. The petitioner's case is still open, which means they can present additional witnesses. So you folks can all come again tomorrow night. If there's other witnesses that you want to ask questions of, you'll be allowed to ask those questions. And it's only after the public hearing concludes, next week, the board is set to meet to discuss any findings from the, the public hearing. So please proceed, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kim Stanley, and I live within the neighborhood cul-de-sac there. And my first comment is just that there are over 20 homes within our area, probably over 25 now, but the only ones that were notified about this solar field were the ones that bordered along the fence line, that the rest of us, none of us were notified, even though this is all going to greatly impact us. And I think that, you know, in future reference, when you are encountering, I'm not sure, maybe the laws only say that you only have to notify the borders, but it is something that is significantly affecting all of us, and you should at least notify everybody within a radius of it. Many of my questions have been addressed by the others from our neighborhood here. And the, I would also state about the property values, with the survey assessment that you had completed, how close were the homes within the solar field that those were surveyed for the value? You know, was it done within a quarter of a mile? Were the homes there? Or were they homes, farms, you know? Were they neighborhoods? Were they scattered homes?
Yeah, regarding the methodology of how that was found, I would like to have someone that did the report testify exactly to that.
Because that's all a factor, that truly factors in with our property values. The other question, I know we've talked a lot about the fire issues. What is the, you know, what is the frequency of fires that occur with solar fields?
With solar fields? Not, not like a, a small percentage. I know the bigger concern would be the batteries component and the lithium ion battery and the fact that you can't, you know, immediately extinguish it.
And, and I guess just, I don't know a lot about the solar fields and that, but with looking at the, I know all the global warning that people speak of and that kind of stuff, what is the heat factor that comes off of all these solar farms with being generated, you know, to combat that footprint essence?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, yeah, the, the panels are designed to absorb heat, so there is probably like a, a degree in Fahrenheit that I guess would essentially warm up, but it wouldn't extend beyond that, that panel. So there is some science behind that. I don't have an exact article to reference right this second, but that's been brought up before. And, yeah, so there wouldn't be an adverse effect to, outside the, the area of where it would create any warming or heating.
All righty. Because I've heard that there's like black areas around the, the solar panels and that, that those themselves would be putting off heat. Is that with the vegetation substitution?
Yeah, so we're not.
With that?
Correct, yes. We're, the panels are just simply screwed into the ground, so there's nothing like underneath it that would also be letting off heat like a concrete slabs.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions, and I would just also reiterate, as our neighbors have, that you please look for other areas that are not next to neighborhoods that are going to affect our property values, possible health, and all the other concerns that we have.
Yeah, and we've, we've definitely done that. And Mr. Winger, who's not here tonight, has voiced the same thing. Mr. Hermes, I hope I'm saying that correct now, has additional lands to the north. However, the cost to essentially run a Gentai, is what it's called, to that northern location, would, would render this project unfinancable.
With the cost factor, though, I mean, are the areas that you're other looking, the other areas that you're looking at more rural with less homes around them, that's not going to be affecting? I mean, rather than looking at the dollar that's being made through the solar versus a loss of value with our homes and everything else, I think that needs to be taken into consideration, that, you know, if this is a moneymaker for Mr. Hermes, you know, versus we're all losing money in our property values from this, that's a concern as well.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, since we are now at 9:08.
Excuse me.
I would recommend we stand in recess till tomorrow night and continue the public hearing at that time. I would remind petitioner, we're still in their case, so if they have other witnesses they wish to present, they may at that time.
Tim, before you recess, can I cross-examine him? Thank you.
My apologies. Please proceed.
That's okay. Do you know what current crop is being grown at that, that proposed site?
I believe it's corn.
Does farming usually produce dust and debris?
Yes.
Would the construction create a comparable amount of dust? Or do you think it'll be more?
I'd say it'd be comparable.
For the battery storage, what's the megawatt for the?
We haven't determined the megawatt for the battery component, but typically it's one to one and a half.
Do you know what the megawatt hours would be then for one to one and a half megawatts?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Do, are there, is there some kind of plan for managing dust during construction?
I don't deal with the construction aspect, but I can definitely follow up on that.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Alice.
Ms. Hinkle? Chairman, I recommend you now stand in recess till tomorrow night at 6:00.
I agree. Do we need a motion? Or you just want to?
You're the chairman, so.
Go ahead.